They came right on time.
So how are you doing?
How's it going?
It's great.
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 How's it going?
It's good.
It was great.
I didn't buy anything, though.
You training her?
Yes.
You want to start coming to the council meetings?
Okay.
Thank you.
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 It's about an acre and a half.
I almost wish that was just a block.
Hey. Yeah, I thought, peach. That's a peach. Well, I just thought I'd bring it up. I had a fire in front of me. Just like me, that's what I call cops. Three times, because they're living back there in those old shopping malls and stuff.
What about those? Yeah.
He used to have a transmission shop. Seaman, Seaman Transmission. Is it really? Well, let me know. Has it been adjudicated? Thank you.
I picked the wrong button. This is clicking.
The meeting of Shreveport City Council is not being called to order. Councilman Fleury will lead us with the invocation, and Councilwoman Fuller will lead us in pledge.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we come to you today with a thankful heart. We ask that you continue to bless our city, Lord. We pray for the workers, the employees of the city who go out daily to deliver services. We pray for their safety, that you will bless them. We pray for our mayor and the leadership of the city. God, you give us wisdom and knowledge. Forgive us of our sins. Go with us and guide us. Through Christ's holy name, I pray. Amen.
Please, with your heart with your right hand and join with the little pledge. Which leads you to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, will you call a roll, please? Councilman Brett. Councilman Paul McFarlane. Present. Councilman Jefferson. Present. Councilman Rogers. Present. Councilman Fuller. Present. And Councilman Walker. Here. And Councilman Walker. Here. Tomorrow, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference and the council meeting from the 22nd to 23rd, and the amendment to the council meeting from April 9th. Okay? Have any council members had been awarded or recognitions at this time? No. Mayor Perkins, you have been awarded communications at this time, sir?
I do. I want to say a happy belated Mother's Day for all the mothers that we have in the audience and that's tuning in. In the words of Abraham Lincoln, "All that I am or hope to be, I owe to my mother." Very fitting. Due to inclement weather this past weekend, our 2019 Paint Your Heart Out Day was rescheduled to June 1st. So all those that were looking forward to participating, there will be another opportunity on June 1st. Looking forward to that event. And lastly, the governor declared a statewide emergency for the state of Louisiana due to all the inclement weather that we had. Our area experienced some significant flooding in some areas of the city, and our crews have been on hand to help keep our citizens safe, particularly in the flood zones. And I personally went out and toured around Fort Park area, some areas of the river, and around School Park area myself, and saw some of the damage. So even if your neighborhood wasn't impacted, you know, just please keep the other Shreveporters in your thoughts and prayers who have experienced some damage to their homes and their neighborhoods, and who suffered power outages and the likes. So that concludes my remarks. Let's cheer.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Perkins. Mr. Green, property standards, Mr. Green? Any questions or concerns relative to property standards? Did you speak with Councilman Green about the issue we were speaking about earlier?
Mobile home on Broadway.
Yeah, I think she called me about it, about the... She wanted to pay her taxes on it. Is that the one?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Maybe you can follow up with him later. Just some follow-up. Okay. I think that's it. Thank you, thank you, sir. Okay. Ms. Jones, revenue connection plan tomorrow. City Attorney for... All right. No public hearing today. Ms. Jones, is there any legislation to be added tomorrow? Not that we're aware of. All right. We have the following request to speak.
Mr. Tom Arsenault. Afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Chairman, my name is Tom Arsenault, 333 Texas Street, Suite 700, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. I am here about zoning case C-2419, which is ordinance number 54. That's a little small tract of land at the corner of East 70th Street and East Burke Coons that's zoned residential currently. The owner has requested for the MPC to consider C-2 zoning as opposed to the C-3. So we would like, on behalf of the applicant, I'm requesting that you tomorrow send that case back to the MPC so that it can consider a zoning other than C-3. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. And that's at East Burke Coons?
Yes, sir. East Burke Coons.
It's right there in front of the... Mr. Chairman, it's right there in front of the Sleep Clinic, right there at Dixie Garden, kind of close to Jill's Gymnastics.
Ah, okay.
Across the street.
That's correct.
I think it's just a little tract of land, and I think the lady spoke to us at the last meeting, and I think she's obtained Mr. Arsenault to represent her. So I would have no trouble sending it back to the MPC.
That's our request. I'll be here briefly tomorrow, and hopefully I'll take this or less time tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arsenault. Lauren Ray Anderson.
So, Lauren Anderson, 247 East Lister Street, 71101. I just had a couple requests today regarding our infrastructure in Shreveport. Just, I don't know if y'all are working on it or not, but the downtown fountain, the in-ground fountain, if we could get that up and going before summertime, that'd be wonderful, because it's a great place for people to gather and hang out. It's good for people, friends, families, to get together and play there. The next thing I wanted to request is that the interchange just south of downtown at I-20 and Market Street be cleaned up. It's been covered in garbage and debris, I want to say, going on years now. It's just, it's disgusting, for one. I hate having to see it every day, but it is a representation of our city, and whenever somebody drives down our interstate, they decide whether or not to stop in Shreveport, and if they're seeing that, they're probably not going to want to stop. And then, just a little comment. Driving around Shreveport, I see, like, you know, sportsman's paradise. We have a lot of water. Water breeds life. So we have a lot of weeds and stuff growing up in our roads, and on our bridges specifically. Whenever you have, like, wildlife, plant life growing in bridges, it creates space, and it jeopardizes the structural integrity of the structure. So I would hope that whoever's responsible for that could, I don't know, take some of that stuff that gets rid of weeds out there, so we can have safe bridges and roads. And that's it for today. Had you reached out to any department and spoke to anyone about your concerns, any of those concerns? Or you just here? Which one? Well, it sounds like most of them were Public Works for one. So you hadn't called, you just came? I called Public Works about the debris on Gilbert one time, because Gilbert has, I think it was Public Works. Honestly, I can't remember. And to be honest, I'm still learning all of the departments and who's responsible for what. That's why I'm here, to learn. So if y'all can give me some direction, you have my contact information, that'd be great. I'll send you an email copy of all the departments also. Wonderful. Thanks. Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Ms. Jones, I've also noticed that the interchange at 20 and Market is in poor condition, and I wonder if we could have staff address that.
Yep. No taken.
Thank you.
All right. Councilman Baffert, did you have anything when standing here first?
No, Mr. Chairman, I don't think.
Okay. We have the following executive appointments to be considered tomorrow. Mr. Chairman, the administration would like to request for the two Shreveport Airport Authority appointments to be removed from the agenda. Good deal.
Mr. Chairman, the city attorney pointed out to me that we have recently listed information regarding Courtney Ray, who will be up for confirmation as Assistant City Attorney. Ms. Creel has expressed that she really could use the help in the city attorney's office, and would like to bring Ms. Ray on board as soon as possible. And so if we can find the time this afternoon, I'd like to suggest that she speak to us now, and that we consider suspending the rules tomorrow and confirming her tomorrow.
Good to me.
And she is present, I understand.
She is present right now? That's... I have no problem or issue with her coming up now, if that's okay with council. Ms. Ray? Courtney Ray. I'm sorry. You just wanted, if you want to ask some questions, forgive my background.
Ms. Ray, if you'd first just give us a little background on your professional experience and what you anticipate doing in the city attorney's office, please.
Yes, sir. I have graduated of LSU Law in 2015. I was a law clerk at the Third Circuit Court of Appeal for two judges, and then I have spent the past twenty-some months for the federal government working for social security disability adjudication.
What have you done in that last position?
It was similar to prior law clerk experience, where the judges would make decisions on disability hearings, and it was our job to read the medical records and support the decision one way or the other.
And what will you be doing for the city attorney's office here?
Prosecuting the misdemeanors and traffic violations.
Very good. And I see Gina, Louisiana, on your resume. My family's from Gina. Are you from Gina?
No, sir. I worked for Judge Jimmy Peters.
All right. And you enjoyed your time in the metropolis, I'm sure?
I did. It was, yes. Booming city.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Okay. Anyone else? Any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Fleury. Please.
That caught my ear. Gina, what'd you say you did in Gina?
I was a law clerk for Judge Jimmy C. Peters on the Third Circuit Court of Appeal.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Councilman Baffert?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Ms. McKeisha, you have anything you want to add to this?
I would just like to thank the council for indulging me in this request. I currently have one prosecutor who's about thirty-six weeks pregnant, and having Ms. Ray there as soon as possible would be a great, a great help to our office, and I think she's going to be a huge value add at City Court, because she really is interested in litigation and working with the city, for the city.
Okay. All right. Mr. Thompson, you know Ms. Ray?
Not yet.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Ms. Ray. We look forward to working with you. Thank you. Okay. We also have for assistant to this... I'm sorry. I just wanted to give you, guys, a housekeeping, little housekeeping note. To confirm her appointment tomorrow, it's about a three-step process. Just to give you the heads up today, under the open meetings law, you'll have to add it to the agenda, and that's a unanimous consent, or vote for all of you to add. The second thing you'll have to do is then suspend the rules to take up the appointment, because your rules say it has to lay over for two weeks. And that takes a two-thirds vote. And then the last step is that you would vote on her appointment, and that would be a simple majority. Vote. Do it all tomorrow, correct? You can do it all tomorrow. It's just, those steps I just listed, there's, it's three steps, and each step takes a different type of vote. Okay. All right. I'm sure you'll keep us in line tomorrow when I mess up, so... Yes, sir. All right. Assistant to the Superintendent of Streets and Drainage would be Edward Savannah, and Assistant to the Assistant Director of Recreation Athletic Division of Spar would be Pershing Miro. And those are the only ones for tomorrow. There are no items on the consent agenda for introduction to be adopted. Ms. Jones, can you proceed with regular agenda item? Resolution 57 is authorizing the mayor to accept a monetary donation of seventy-five thousand from Judah and Astrid Hertz to the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, to be utilized by the Shreveport Public Assembly and Recreation Department for Project Swim. Resolution 58 is accepting dedication of the streets and servitudes for utilities and drainage, as shown on the right-of-way dedication plaque, The Grove. Resolution 59 to recognize Ralph D. Valentine and to dedicate the 3,400 and 3,500 blocks of Mansfield Road for his commitment and contributions to the city of Shreveport. Resolution 60, a resolution whereby the mayor is making a recommendation to the city council for its approval regarding the amount and type of various insurance premiums, and to authorize the mayor to execute payment to the agent of record for the purpose of binding insurance. All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Butch?
On Resolution Number 59, I'm going to ask that we postpone that till our next regular meeting.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? That's it? Ms. Jones, would you proceed with introduction of resolution? Resolution 61, authorizing the Shreveport Airport Authority to execute a permanent right-of-way and easement with Southwestern Electric Power Company. Resolution 62 is adopting the system survey and compliance questionnaire required by the Legislative Auditor's Office of the state of Louisiana. Resolution 63, authorizing the mayor to accept a monetary donation of twenty thousand dollars from the Brookshire Grocery Company to the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, to be utilized by the Shreveport Police Department and the Shreveport Fire Department. Resolution 64, selecting the Times as the official journal for the city of Shreveport for the period commencing July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2020. Resolution 65, approving the budget for the Cato Shreveport Sales and Use Tax Commission for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019. Okay. Vice Chair Nicholson?
Mr. Thompson, what roughly do we spend publishing our minutes in The Times every And if I'm putting you on the spot and you don't know, that's fine. I'm just trying to get a sense of the expenditure.
Let us give that to you in a few minutes.
Okay. Do we have any, is there any other option? I know, or no?
No.
Because they're the only newspaper that's published here?
Well, the biggest thing is, we could do it, I suppose, in the sun, except for the fact that we have to have it done within seven days of the council meeting. And so that's the only newspaper that can publish it, that meets the criteria within seven days of the council meeting.
And it's state law that we have to put it in a newspaper?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And the state law also states what the minimum rate that we will charge. So the only option we have is how much we put into the paper.
Very good. Thank you.
Ms. Jones, proceed with introduction of ordinances, please. Ordinance 58, rescinding ordinances 33 of 2009, 54 of 2011, and 136 of 2013, and removing vehicular flow restrictions on Baker Street, Thannon Street, and North Street in Section 37. Ordinance 57 is to create and establish a know-through truck route on Mackey Lane between Jewella Avenue and Walker Road pursuant to Section 90-123 and Section 90-124 of the Code of Ordinances. Ordinance 60, creating a stop intersections in the Lucian Field Estates within the city limits of the city of Shreveport. Ordinance 61 is amending the 2019 Riverfront Development Fund budget. Ordinance 62 is zoning case 19-300-C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located between Fourth Street and Questwell Avenue approximately 425 feet northeast of Marshall Street, Shreveport Catopiers, Louisiana, from 1MU Industrial Mix Use Districts to I-2 Heavy Industrial District. Ordinance 63, zoning case 19-303-C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the northwest corner of Greenwood Road and Danny R. Wimberley Road, Shreveport Catopiers, Louisiana, from C-3 General Commercial District to C-4 Heavy Commercial District. Ordinance 64, zoning case 19-305-C, and ordinance to... Ordinance sixty-four, zoning case nineteen dash three oh five dash C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the southwest corner of Linwood Avenue and West Sixty-third Street, Shreveport Cato Parish, Louisiana, from R-one-five Single Family Residential District to I-one Light Industrial District.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Fuller?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I've got, I've received some concerned phone calls from neighbors to the, um, case ordinance sixty-four, um, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that that is going from a residential to a light industrial adjacent people's homes. And, um, I was a little concerned about it, but I think it might have passed unanimously with the MPC. But considering that we all had such strong feelings about industrial adjacent, um, adjacent residential recently, that y'all might want to go ahead and give that a look-see, to see how you feel about it. It's for a mechanics shop, I believe, adjacent. It's the area, they're, they're oriented facing Linwood, and this is gonna be behind that area adjacent to neighbors on Sixty-third Street. That's all I wanted to point out. Thank you.
You saying the residence, though?
The residence, they, uh, a gentleman had all of his neighbors sign a petition against it, and he was fairly concerned when they didn't get any traction or any conversation from the MPC about it.
On, Mr. Chairman, on the map, am I looking at this right, that it's surrounded by industrial? It looks like it's just one little sliver that was R-one. They're trying to, I mean, it's got some residential behind it, but corner of Sixty-third and Linwood, it looks like that pretty much everything around it is industrial. Is that right?
There's residential west and south, like a residential buffer, and then there's commercial one, south right there, and they're trying to go, I think that what they're trying to do is, oh, I see, it's just this little piece right here.
That's, that's, that's right.
Yeah. So, no, I mean, there's industrial across the street, but it's commercial, and then that little piece of residential.
Well, it looks like right around it, but it's, it's R-one as well.
Actually, why is there this industrial way over here? The one at the west edge of it? That's a whole story for another day. Okay.
Yeah.
Just tell them, let, bring it up.
All right. All right. Uh, Ms. Jones, would you proceed with ordinances on second reading and final passage, please?
Ordinance twenty-seven, to repeal and replace Article seven purchases in Chapter twenty-six Finance of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances relative to purchases. Ordinance forty-four is amending the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, two thousand nineteen General Fund Budget. Ordinance fifty, amending the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, two thousand nineteen Capital Improvements Budget. Ordinance fifty-one, an ordinance amending the two thousand nineteen General Fund Budget. Ordinance fifty-two is amending the two thousand nineteen General Fund Budget. Ordinance fifty-three, to amend and reenact certain sections of Chapter ninety-four of the Code of Ordinances, city of Shreveport, Louisiana, relative to utilities. Ordinance fifty-four, zoning case number C dash twenty-four dash nineteen, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the southwest corner of East Seventieth Street and East Burt Coons Industrial Loop, Shreveport Cato Parish, Louisiana, from R-one-seven Single Family Residential District to C-three General Commercial District. Ordinance fifty-five, a zoning case number C dash twenty-five dash nineteen, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on nineteen twenty-five Crosslake Boulevard, Shreveport Cato Parish, Louisiana, from C-one Neighborhood Commercial District to R-one-seven Single Family Residential District. Ordinance fifty-six, a zoning case number C dash twenty-seven dash nineteen, and orders to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the west side of Linwood Avenue between Bowingers Street and Wilkinson Street, Shreveport Cato Parish, Louisiana, from I-two Heavy Industrial District to C-three General Commercial District to C-four Heavy Commercial District. Ordinance fifty-seven, a zoning case number C dash thirty dash nineteen, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the southeast corner of West Burt Coons Industrial Loop and West Port, Shreveport Cato Parish, Louisiana, from C-three General Commercial District to I-one Light Industrial District.
All right. Councilman Butcher?
Um, Mayor, has, has there been any, ordinance number forty-four, has there been any conversations with the school board on y'all's end? Maybe, maybe the chief? I think, I'd like to also talk to Chief Raymond, too, about this, if that's, if that's okay?
No, we haven't sit down and had any formal conversations. Um, you know, this is some legislation that was generated by council, so if you have any specific questions you'd like us to ask and engage in, then we'd be happy to sit and talk.
Okay. Chief, just real quick, I, I kinda wanted to kinda update the council from the, uh, from the Public Safety Committee meeting. You had sent a couple of emails to me in reference to, uh, I think that it was discussed at the Public Safety Committee meeting, that we were gonna, uh, possibly try to do some type of study. Chairman, I think we talked about that, trying to see where we needed these crossing guards, and Chief, you have some information on that, don't you?
Yes, so we reached out to Public Works, and there are a couple of options there, uh, really, really three options, I guess. One is that we contract a company to provide that service. Uh, the, the positive, the pros of that is it would be done in more of a timely manner, but it would cost, uh, what was estimated to us from Public Works is about thirty thousand dollars, uh, which obviously would be a negative. A second option was we could do it in-house. We being, our Public Works, could do that, but that would take up to a year and a half, because there's so many locations, they have to go out there. Now that school ends this week, it'd actually be next year before they can get started, and there's apparently a certain amount of time they'd have to spend at each location that a crossing guard i- is, uh, located, to determine whether or not they need to be there or not. So there, there's a lengthy process. The third option is, uh, would be that I could take, uh, supervisor, the most recently supervised the crossing guards for over the last year. It's familiar with the locations that he believes are not being utilized appropriately, or that we don't have a lot of children crossing, and we could make those specific recommendations to Public Works, who could initially go by those locations and agree, yes, we do not need a crossing guard here, or say, no, as a matter of fact, there was quite a bit of traffic. So we could kind of narrow down the number of, uh, locations.
I personally like the third option, I think. Uh, our, the supervisor that's, that does the crossing guards, I think he has enough experience with that. That's what he does. Uh, I, but, but I would want the administration and, and legal to kinda guide us with this a little bit, but I, I don't want to, uh, to push this much longer. I mean, I, I think that we need to, we need to move on this, that, that there is some budgetary restraints that we have, and I don't believe we're gonna be able to continue to subsidize the amount that we're subsidizing. I would rather see us put that back in, to the police department. But, um, I, I don't know where we go from here, Chairman. Do we, do we have a resolution to have the police department look into this? What do we do?
I mean, luckily, luckily it is the summer, and, uh, I think that option three is the best, uh, route to go at this particular time. And we'll just go ahead and move forward and see what, uh, what he comes up with, and we'll go from there.
Hey, Mr. Chair...
Oh. I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, uh, Mr. Chairman, this is your legislation, and Councilman Butcher, you've, um, we spoke about it as well. Uh, we can sit with school board representatives as well, and, uh, iron this out to make sure it's as painless as possible for both parties.
And I think that's, I think that's what I have conveyed to several coun, I mean, to several school board members that have called me about it, that, uh, the administration and, and the council's gonna work with them to make it as painless as possible. However, we can't, uh, continue to subsidize this, and we, we've got, and I commend the administration and Councilman Bowman for moving forward with this, because we can't continue to subsidize this. And, uh, we also can't, uh, have crossing guards when we don't have any children crossing. It's ridiculous. So, um, I just would like for us to move on with, with option three, if that's, that's what we can decide to do.
Sounds good to me.
I can, I can get that list to Public Works of all recommendations, and they can move from there.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
Anything else, Councilman Butcher?
That's it, Mr. Sir.
All right. Councilman Bradford?
Chairman, while I agree that option three would appear to be the best, um, where we proceed with this, uh, situation, I don't think that the urgency is, is to the point that has been expressed. Now, I mean, I, I don't understand, help me understand, Councilman Butcher, out of all the expenses that are related to our budget, crossing guards would be a priority to move expeditiously to cut out. I mean, I mean, there are, there are a ton of, what I see, situations to where we need to review and address, to save, to save budget funds. I, I think, I think we would be, we would be disingenuous if we did not proceed with the conversation with the school board. Uh, I mean, I'm just wondering, one day, on August the sixteenth, when school starts, there's no crossing guards on the streets of Shreveport? Because the school board refuses to participate, because they say they don't have any funds. Kid get hit on the streets by a car. Who's liable for that? Not the school board, because it's a city street. I'm saying, I think we need to move with caution to make sure that the city of Shreveport and the school board is in agreement on how we would proceed with this, and I don't think saving seventy-five thousand dollars is, should be, the primary factor. There are millions of dollars that need to be put on the table when we start talking about next year's budget. And I just don't think, we picking, we, we, we picking at the low fruit, something that, you know, picking on children, just like what happened with, with, with some of the conversation with the school board, uh, tax renewal. I'm just, I'm just saying, if we gonna, if we gonna start talking about cutting budgets, I think we need to put everything on the table and not just start picking at this and that and the other, and let's be, do a totality re- review of, of, of what we need to start cutting, and let's move with that process, and not just saying, let's look at cutting crossing guards. But I do believe that, that the school board should be in the conversation, and I do believe that the, the option that the chief would, uh, presented would be, would be the most reasonable, but I think, Mr. Chairman, we need to postpone this until we get to some resolve.
I'm, I'm glad you brought up about the school board and their tax, their renewal, because, uh, they got more money than we got.
Mr. Chairman, that's not...
And, and, and we did not say cut out the scho, we're not talking about cutting out the crossing guard. I just wanted to add that in. I'm gonna let Councilman, uh, Nicholson speak, but that, we didn't talk about, we didn't say we're gonna cut it out.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. I'm not, I'm not up for debate.
Mr. Chairman, we discussed in a recent Public Safety Committee meeting the fact that the city of New Orleans, in conjunction with the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development, developed a school crossing guard policy. And in that policy, it indicated that at least in New Orleans, every private school, every school district, every charter school is responsible for funding and managing its own crossing guards. I, I would like to know what is done in other communities i- in the state. What we're talking about is, is a deviation from, from long practice here. We funded this for many years, but Chairman Bowman is, is right that we are very fiscally constrained, uh, a- at the city level. Uh, and, uh, while a quarter million dollars, uh, which is in the range of what we pay for these crossing guards every year, is not going to solve our budget problems, uh, it is, uh, it is a, a start. I think we've gotta look, uh, both at expenditures of that size and larger expenditures, and I, I hope and expect that when we begin the process of negotiating the, the budget for twenty twenty, uh, that we are looking for millions of dollars of cuts, because, uh, we've got to make those cuts to bring the city to a, to a place of solvency and stability. Thank you.
Councilman Butcher?
Just, just for the record, I, I have said at the last meeting that I didn't want us to move too fast on this. Councilman? I want us to take our time, but in the Public Safety Committee meeting, we tasked the chief with coming up with, with some solutions of how we could do studies, and we do have some time. It's not like, you know, it's not like we're up against some kind of time restraint, but this is not my legislation. I just took it up in the Public Safety Committee. Uh, the mayor and I have talked about it. We tasked the mayor with finding ways to cut. Um, also believe that, according to my conversation with Chief Raymond, this has been something that carried over from the previous administration, that we've been trying to get, uh, uh, something done on. I, I'm not saying that it's something that we have to do right this second, but I don't want us, we've been pushing it down the road since nineteen eighty-seven, since Chief Gruber was the police chief. So we, we need to make some diligent efforts to, uh, work with the, with the school board and find out exactly where we do the, need these crossing guards, and, um, I, I in no way would ever want to endanger any children or anything like that. I, I just think that we're, we have to start this conversation, and, and I think that the chief did exactly what we told him to do in the Public Safety Committee meeting, and I just wanted an update on that, so, thank you.
All right. And Councilman Bradford, I hate that you, you said you weren't up for a debate. You, you always seem like you're up for a debate, so I was just putting some facts out there, so, and, 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 and...
Mr. Chairman, you, you was, you was errant in saying that the fund that passed on that Saturday was dedicated for crossing guards. That money was dedicated to...
No, I didn't, no, 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 no.
Well, you said they had more money than we had.
Period. Point blank is what I said. They had more money than, than we did, is what I said. I didn't say the money that they got was earmarked for that.
My apologies.
Okay. We have no...
Chair.
Yes, I'm sorry, Councilman Green.
I guess this would be to the city attorney. Since I work for the city, will I be able to be a crossing guard?
Might as research that and think that.
What'd he say, Dan? What'd he say?
She don't know yet. She gotta check it out.
You, you interested, Councilman Flurry? You interested, too?
I'm about it today.
All right. Mr. Thompson, do we have any table legislation to be removed?
Uh, no, sir.
All right. There are no other appeals?
No appeals.
I thought we had a proper standard appeal.
Oh, we had what?
We don't have a proper, uh, I thought we did. Okay. No ABO? Are there any other appeals, Mr. Thompson? No?
We have no other appeals.
All right. Are there any reports from office boards, committee? All right. Clerk's report, Mr. Thompson?
Uh, beside the, uh, appointment of the mayor, of the Assistant City Attorney, which you've already discussed and heard from, uh, we had appointments to the Historical Preservation Commission, Jasmine Jernigan, Dr. Fred, Frederick, uh, Washington, and Dr. Cheryl White.
Okay.
All of those are for three-year terms.
All right. No executive session? Is there anything else from anyone? Councilman Green?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to invite the, uh, city council mayor and also the general public on next Sunday. I'll announce it again tomorrow. At our nine o'clock service, uh, our governor will be worshiping with us, and you all are invited. As my grandmom would say, you're welcome once, you're welcome twice, you're welcome, welcome, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Green? Councilman Bradford?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I have two, uh, appreciations and, 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 and I need to, I need to say, say this. Let me first start with the fire chief. I wanna, I wanna commend the fire chief. First of all, I wanna commend him for, uh, and his team for canvassing the, the Cherokee Park neighborhood on Saturday, Saturday the last, uh, installing, uh, smoke detectors throughout the neighborhood. I joined them along with some other volunteers, and we worked, uh, that morning, and I think we passed out over, over thirty, I think. Gee, was it that many?
Ninety-four, we saw.
How many?
Ninety-four.
Okay, that was my team that did thirty, okay. But it, but it was, it was a very positive, uh, it was a very positive, uh, uh, undertaking, and I appreciate that. But I especially want to thank him for what happened on, um, what night the lights went out? Thursday? Thursday. In Allendale and throughout the city, but in Allendale specifically, Mr. Chairman, the, the power, the power went out in, throughout the neighborhood, but especially at Canaan Towers. Canaan Towers is a, is a elderly and complex, you have to be at least sixty-eight to live there, plus they also have people who have disabilities, people that's in wheelchairs, and people who can't maneuver themselves. So, as you can, as you can imagine, once the lights went out, at, at three o'clock the morning of, the morning of, of Thursday, and remained out throughout the day and into the night, the fire department, led by Chief Wolverton, uh, was very sensitive to the Canaan Village residents, and they went there, and they took out and evacuated everybody off the main floors, has their floors, they, there's people that were stranded on those floors for several, several hours, who hadn't had any food or water, and the fire department went into action and, and, and moved everybody downstairs. But they didn't stop there. He called me, again, he called me throughout the, throughout the evening and giving me update on this, so I finally went over there. But my, my point is that his, his maneuver, s- last maneuver was, 'cause he was engaged with the fire, with the, with the, uh, SWEAP Corps as well, and he told SWEAP Corps, if you do not restore power in this apartment complex, and he gave them a reasonable time, and the reasonable time was somewhere around nine-thirty that night, then he was gonna proceed, 'cause he had contacted Homeland Security and the, and the Red Cross, he was gonna proceed in, in evacuating the whole complex to shelters and to other places that they could have a comfortable night. Uh, and, 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 and the proactiveness about that was, was great, but he did something else, because the manager of the department had went home, and it was, it was sort of like a, an evacuation of the premises, and the chief had his inspectors to locate her and have her to come back to the site. And there was, there was, it was, it was nothing, it was nothing to really, uh, play with, in the sense that, you know, it was a serious endeavor, because she was responsible for those, the care of those residents, and, and inspectors was very firm and explained to her her negligence in leaving and without contacting anybody to help remove or to care for those residents. So, they was, they was firm, but they was fair. They was fair with her, and the lights came back on at nine-fifteen on Thursday night, and in the interim, the chief had made preparations to look at having sports transit buses to come out to, a lot of residents to sit on the bus, and he had forty cases of water, cold water, to be brought to the complex, so that the residents would have cold water. But like I said, the ones that liked, those things were available, the water was there, residents took advantage of that, but they also was happy that the fire department was there to assist them and to make whatever provision that was made. I think that was, gee, what was great leadership, I wanna thank you for that. Let's give him a hand, if y'all don't mind. My second commendation is gonna go to the chief of police, Chief Ben Raymond. There was a meeting at Whiffy of Funeral Home on last Tuesday night. It was, it was a meeting that was, that had drew a lot of concern, citizens regarding the shooting and, and the killing of Anthony Childs. You remember the story, sure? Chief Raymond, in the corner, Dr. Tuber, came to that meet, and they sit there, and the residents and others almost tried to prosecute the case at Whiffy of Funeral Home. And the chiefs sit there and took everything that was levered against him. They called him all kind of different liars and conspiracies, and, and he never lost his cool, because he said that he followed proper procedure. Same thing happened with the corner. Now, I don't know who I would've sit there, I think I'd have got up and walked out after, I got called a liar so many times, and accused of, of a cover-up so many times. But he, he didn't do that. He's, he sit there and he answered all the questions to the best of his ability. And I, I know that, uh, you know, that things like this, it's a process, it takes a process to come to an inter resolve. Who didn't show up was the district attorney, and he should've been there, because if these gentlemen had the courage to sit there and to, and to respond to all the questions and allegations that were levered against them, so should have the district attorney and, and express why he felt like he did not have to prosecute the case, or he didn't have to even look at the case. All the residents said, well, why didn't the DA show up and tell us? What criteria did he use to say that, as it was ruled, it was not, it was not reviewable as a race to, um, indictment? But nevertheless, I was proud of the chief of police, and I wanna thank him for coming and, and being, being so professional in your, in your, in your duty as, as chief of police, 'cause you didn't have to come, and I told them you didn't have to come, but you did, and you, and you took whatever was, whatever was, uh, said, but I'm gonna say to, to the council, now, the way they was talking, some residents gonna be here tomorrow to continue to express their frustration about that situation, and I want us to be as diligent as the chief was. I want us to sit here and, and understand it, and listen to the, to the, to the, to the complaints, and to the expressions of those that may show up here and talk about this situation. It, it may fall upon us to do something, or to seek some type of response to why, or what we can do to make this, to make this not happen again, Mayor. I don't know what we can do, but there may be some options that we may can take to make sure that this doesn't happen again. According to chief, according to the, according to the, 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 uh, the corner, everything that was required was followed to procedure. But, but there has to be some options of what we can do to make sure this doesn't happen again. Now, all I'm saying is that, one of the options that they presented was, maybe the council could let, uh, could petition the, the legislature, 'cause we know we under civil service, uh, ordinance, so we can't do a whole lot, but they wanna see if we can at least look at having some type of, uh, citizen review committee, but I don't know if that's, if that's real or what, but, but I'm just saying that if they should come, let's, let's give them the same respect and patience that the chief of police did. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Bradford.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I add?
Mayor Perkins?
To the, um, well, first of all, Councilman Bradford, just kinda going through the numbers, um, I wanna commend you for being very much in tune with your district. Uh, we were on the phone late Thursday night, um, with the Canaan Towers, uh, with everything that was going on over there, and, you know, that meant a lot, I'm sure, to those, to our citizens, to see you out there working with them, and being in constant contact, communication with myself and Chief Wolverton. So, thank you for being there, thank you for, you know, letting us know what was going on there, so we can help serve some of the most vulnerable in our community. That meant a lot for us. Um, and also, just to, also second what you said about Chief Wolverton and his leadership, not only was he at the towers that night, but he was, I mean, racing throughout the city. I got updates on our critical flood areas throughout that day and throughout the weekend, along with weather reports, and, um, you know, his staff would go out into neighborhoods and see rising water levels, and put out roadblock signs, and call Public Works. And also, um, bring, speaking of Public Works, our SPAR department helped deliver water that night as well. So, it was a joint effort from the City of Shreveport to make sure we were doing all we could for our citizens, so I commend you for that. And as far as, um, you know, I'd like to second your commendation for Chief Raymond as well, uh, for him going out to the neighborhood, he really embodies our, uh, principle of community-oriented policing. Uh, and so, yeah, it was, it was very brave of him to go out there and listen to citizens, and he's gonna continue to do that. We've had conversations, he'll continue to do that, and I'll continue to do that as well, so, I just wanted to second your commendations and commend you as well, Councilman, thank you.
And Mayor, and, and Mr. Chairman, I, I, I wanna apologize to the mayor, 'cause the mayor and I worried communication as well on Thursday night.
I wasn't, I wasn't bringing it up for me.
No, no, but I should've said that, because you was prepared to move in whatever assistance that you could've given as well. Uh, it was late, you, you had a, a previous appointment, and, and yet you was, uh, responsive to, 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 to get back, and, and was willing to, you know, whatever we need to do, you say, Councilman, whatever, whatever we need to do, let me know, and we'll do it, okay? And I appreciate that effort as well.
All right. Um, I'm gonna go back to Mr. Art.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Tanya firmly reminded me, uh, that I failed to inform you that because Memorial Day, uh, will be Monday, May the twenty-seventh, that our regular administrative conference will be scheduled for Friday, May the twenty-fourth. So, and the regular meeting will be on Tuesday, but you may wanna look at your schedules and change them.
We all voted and said we was gonna be here on Memorial Day. I was joking. Okay. All right. Everybody got that, twenty-four? Okay. Councilman Flur, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna compliment, uh, the administration, I saw something today, was a beautiful sight, a street sweeper on Cato Street, and, uh, it looked like it was one of our new ones, and so, that's the first time in four years and some months that, uh, we've been able to see, and, and it really was working great, and so I wanna compliment the administration for finally getting street sweepers out. Thank you, Mayor.
With vacuums.
With vacuums.
All right. Mayor Perkins, is that a old one, or that another, Chris, speak? Okay. Any other council member? Councilman Green, I know you had something.
I'm done.
Normally, you catch me right before, I'm just making sure.
I'm done, Mr. Chair.
All right, well, if there's nothing else, then this meeting is adjourned.